Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Okay, and our first item on the agenda is discussion of recommendation from Joint Emergency Emergency Management Commission 911 Board regarding 911 communication proposal with possible action. And we have on the phone Doug Eichols, county attorney, and Tim Veratine from Omnicom, who is our consultant on this project. So Doug, you sent us an opinion on Friday. Would you like to go over that with us at this time?
Yes.
Okay.
So I would have to look at the Mon communication project. Started the meeting last week and also reviewed some documents related to that. Had a conversation with Mark Corey regarding the project. And about the project with regard for gift with Motorola and...
Doug? Doug?
Yes?
Is there a better connection you can maybe move or something that you're breaking up? It's hard to understand. Doug, are you still there? Tim, are you still there?
Yes ma'am, I'm still here.
Okay, well, go ahead and, I don't know if there was much that we needed from you. Anyways, you did receive a copy of Doug Eichols' opinion. Do you have any insights or thoughts until we can get Doug Eichols back on the phone?
You know, I understand, obviously, I'm not an attorney and the state statutes apparently may be interpreted differently by different attorneys because I'm pretty sure there's other counties that have filed directly from Motorola and sole source went on the state system without going out to bid. So I'm not exactly sure what mechanism they used. Motorola would probably be able to speak to that better than I can. But all I have to say is that you certainly can go out to bid if you want to, just understand that that process would be a minimum of four months and six, most likely six months, assuming a single bid for both civil infrastructure and the LMR portion of it, to get through that process, select a vendor and sign a contract. Somewhere in four to six months at a minimum, and add to the project to go out to RFP.
Okay. All right, thank you. Monica, did you want to speak to the other counties that you've worked with?
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you want to start?
Hey, we lost you.
We did.
Did you find, yeah, we lost you a bit ago, but I mean, your connection was not great. Tim, are you still there? Tim? Tim?
I'm here.
Oh, Doug, are you there? Doug?
You got it? Yes.
Okay.
Can you continue, Doug?
We lost you, Doug. You started and then your phone cut out.
Okay, so I asked a little bit of the project as a whole. I had talked to Mark Corey about the project and about the possibility of the county just going with the proposal from Motorola. And Mark raised a concern and I, what raised a concern, that sort of prompted after getting the request to review it, wrote the opinion that I did. And I think it speaks for itself in that this project is subject to portions of the project, let me put it that way, are subject to bidding. And we've been through this before with regard to what types of projects need to be bid. It's similar to our opinion when the board considered work on the Sonic Temple a few years ago and the need to take bids on that. At the end of the day, we believe that the board needs to take bids on a portion related specifically to the towers and the equipment that goes on those towers.
Doug, Aaron?
Yes?
Aaron, here, I have a question. Did you, when you were researching Chapter 26 and competitive bidding threshold, did you look at some of the other counties in Iowa that, I mean, I have to imagine, and I think I've been told that there's maybe a handful, three to five other counties that have probably done a package deal and ran it under one provider. Did, I guess my question is, is it your opinion they're legally doing it wrong and the AG just hasn't addressed it yet? Or I just, I'm not tracking on that aspect of it.
Well, I think there's, I think it's some of the Omnicom materials, it's either Omnicom materials or Motorola materials that cites to the other counties that have been a part of the project, the state's overall project. And it talks about some did competitive bidding, some did with sole source. And, you know, the breaks that they got in the overall cost related to whether they limited competitive bidding for sole source. I reviewed this with Oliver and Cooney and they reviewed, my opinion, they signed off on it at the end of the day. And I think if some of those other places went with sole source with regard to towers, that was included in the project. And I have no idea what was included in those projects, obviously. I mean, they could have been just looking at radios. Radios themselves, we don't, they need to have competitive bidding. It's the physical structures and the manner of the items related to those structures that need to have competitive bidding. And if somebody did it without, sole source with towers without competitive bidding, then we think that was a mistake on their part.
Okay.
Any other questions for, any other questions from the public?
Yeah, sorry. So just to Tim's point earlier, there have been other Iowa counties that have included the civil portion in our projects, and I'm just going to name a few for you. Most recently, Adair County, Union County, Montgomery County, and Mills County. Those are the most recent, and the sole source with us, they do include radio and towers, civil, under our contract.
I guess I have one other question, just related to the timing of it all. How are we sort of this far down the path and now addressing this aspect of whether or not it needs to be competitively bid? Is there any historical perspective for that, or that the public and my knowledge that someone can speak to? Because I'm, it seems like this, this is a discussion that should have happened nine months ago, or three years ago, preferably, but at least once we started getting serious about doing something, is there?
I can only speak to when we started getting serious about it this year. And correct me if I'm wrong, Doug, but Don Bowman has been at our 911 meetings, Joint 911, Emergency Management Commission meetings, discussing this project since April. Doug, Eichols?
Well, I believe she was at one meeting, the very last meeting that you had in May. So we talked about the project and wherever we were, frankly, it was down this, the county attorney's office didn't see matters sooner.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Okay, any other questions? This is a discussion for this communication proposal. So any other questions, not just regarding the opinion that we received today?
I have one question. You said last time we were all together that it was a matter of public safety. Drawing this out, is it something that because of public safety, especially with Doug's concerns, that changing now might, you know, be detrimental to? I'd hate for somebody to get hurt or killed because of something like that. That's my only concern about that.
Right. And that's, to me, that is exactly what we're deciding on today, whether the time that we take to take this out to bid, which is what we legally need to do, or if we do forego that four to six months, which is a long time, to go without a proper communication system, which is what we deal with, or go with the proposal that we have from Motorola, which is what 911 and the Emergency Management Commission brought to us to decide to go forth with that. That is what we have before us. So if you have any input on this project at all, that is what we're taking into consideration today.
So the opinion says that the county is now going to be, it's going to be an essential corporate purpose of the county to buy jurisdictional radios, is that correct?
We haven't made that decision, but...
I thought that was in the opinion that it is.
That is one of the things we are considering. I think there were three options laid out before us with Mark Corey addressing that issue. And that was one of the, this is one of the better options in which he's laid out for us to do.
Okay. So if you take on that, are you expecting to buy to be as Indianola, as Carlisle, as Norwalk need to buy radios? If you determine that it's an essential public purpose for the county, are you going to buy those jurisdictions radios as well at some point in time?
Well, that's been discussed with the attorney also, and we would like to set money aside for that purpose for those jurisdictions that have already purchased radios. So, but that is another option that we have. So we don't want to neglect that there have been jurisdictions that have already done so.
Thank you.
Any other? Yes, sir.
Yeah, this is Tim again. And just one thing I didn't mention earlier, given that the county's existing VHS system has failed and I guess we say communications now are on the state system, I wouldn't call it a temporary basis, but it's not. And state system doesn't provide active coverage for the county as it is without the build-out of these additional towers. I guess whether you're going to have to spend money on your existing VHS system to get it back and change if you're going to delay this project further and, and have to go out to bid, whether you might take that into consideration as well, given the condition of your existing public safety communication.
Doug or Tim, do you have a number on how much that would cost to remedy our current system, to hold it together long enough to where we can get this system to build a tower?
I do not. The issue we have is the copper phone lines that are coming back to the, doing the backhaul, like at the water towers. I mean, there's no fiber op, there's no other option than copper right now, so we'd have to trench in fiber. So we're at the mercy of whatever telco or whoever we get to, you know, bend it out for fiber to run to these towers. The option I'm looking at right now is using FirstNet to try and do the backhaul, but there again, we'll have to purchase equipment. And right now, it's kind of a, we got to get proof of concept first. I believe Missouri is using this in a couple of places, but we're researching that to try and get some of the outlined towers using FirstNet. Therefore, we have coverage, which would be the northern part of the county has coverage. So at minimum, get the Norwalk Tower and Hartford Tower onto FirstNet for the backhaul and bringing that back. The other issue we have is the MTR 2000 transmitters that we have at these tower sites are, they're out of service. So if they break down, we literally got to buy a new transceiver to put in there because they aren't maintained anymore. So there, you're talking another $8,000 to $10,000 for each one of them if they go down. So right now, we're just living on a prayer, I mean, honestly. We spent last week doing several options, trying to get Carlisle coverage for their police department. We tried a repeater on the fire station and it covered the gap downtown, but then it wouldn't cover the other side of town. So what we're doing now is we rebooted their Carlisle repeater, which hadn't been used in several years, and that gave coverage within town. And then we're using a gateway between two radios at the fire station to give their officers portable coverage. And that's also created another issue in the dispatch center that once they're done transmitting, there's a delay in things, so there's a couple hiccups come in because it still looks like it's trying to transmit, just because you're going from a repeater to repeater and it's passed several different ways. And is it working? Kinda, but it's definitely not a public safety grading system that we have right now. That might be sense.
At our last meeting in May, it was kind of brought up that we had opportunities to share these towers, the costs with self-producers. And it was not brought up and even talked about during the Omnicom presentation, and that only brought it up later. Isn't that something we should be looking at as an integral part of it? I mean, we're talking big money, you know, $30,000, $40,000 a month, just as some of the examples. So why is that not part of this conversation?
Well, because of the expense, leasing towers would incur for the county as opposed to...
No, 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 we're leasing to them, revenue, additional revenue to the county.
Okay, you're talking the Verizon towers?
For, yeah, cell towers. It was brought up momentarily and was not really well-covered in the, at the courthouse when we were there. And it was kind of a new thing to everybody. And it was like, whoa, we're not looking at this? And they talked about the dollars a month, and it was, it was big money that the providers would attach on to our towers and they'll pay for some of the installation. At least they would have the, they would lease them for anywhere from five to eight a month per tower. And that adds up big.
I'm not aware of that.
The original scope of work had the spec for the towers was additional room for two carriers. And the 911 Board had put that spec in there for the option to lease out to other carriers. And then in this contract process, that's been reduced because of the cost of the structure and not having the carriers standing in line waiting to, I mean, I offered it up to, I talked to FirstNet about it, and in their eyes, they said that they've already determined where their sites are going to be. So they didn't want to tie, and other carriers are similar to that. They've already, they already have their footprint in Warren County, but the biggest option we had would have been FirstNet. So then, like I say, that was one of the things that was cut in the, in the cost of the structure was reducing the steel cost. And then going back to the carriers, if they want to come onto our tower, then they would be responsible for, for the structural engineering and any retrofitting that would be...
Does that answer your question?
What did you say for a month?
They were talking, they were just throwing out swag, trying to guess.
I was there too.
Five to eight?
I heard three, but...
Okay, three times five towers, that's still substantial.
You might be able to put two different, you could get six.
I think it depends also on the popularity of that individual tower. Obviously, will vary.
Any other considerations? All right, are there any comments by those on the phone?
This is Doug. Here.
Sorry, was that Doug?
I'm here.
Okay, did you have any further comments or?
Well, my concern is this, that it's not a matter of public safety, and we all agree that we need a better communication system, it's whether this complies with the code or not. And if we don't comply with the code, if somebody comes in as an aggrieved party and says, "You didn't do it correctly," then we're going to wind up in court, and part of this is going to be delayed anyway. So it's a consideration that needs to be weighed. If you go against the opinion, which is always your option, then somebody else comes in aggrieved, it's not going to be four months, it's going to be longer than that. All I can do is give you advice, you have to decide what you do with it.
Yes, sir, and I appreciate that, thank you. Tim, did you want to speak?
Yeah. One other question, and this is primarily for Doug. In your, in your opinion, you have, or you stated that you would prefer that the civil portion of that be bid separately, I think, and, but it didn't really matter long as it, it could be bid in total as the civil and the LMR together as long as it was bid. Is that correct, Sabre?
That's the correct statement.
I don't have anything else.
Okay, anything else? All right, we're moving on to item...
Well, depending on what you guys decide with number one, depends on whether you do number two. Because if you're not going to accept Motorola's proposal and move forward with that, you do not need to set a public hearing to issue the bonds for that essential debt by November of its deadline, which is what item two is. So item one is if you're going to move forward with Motorola, then we need to move on with item two and set that public hearing for the 24th so that you have the authority to issue those bonds to be able to sign that contract with Motorola by their 25th deadline. So item one is a discussion with possible action because the board has to decide if they're going to move forward with, I mean, we can set a hearing, we can do the publication, have everybody be prepared for it if you want more time, and then, and then you can change at that hearing. But, so that was kind of, if you're ready to determine what you want to do, otherwise we can go ahead and set the public hearing and get it posted and add a later date and determine whether you're actually going to do it, but...
It was my understanding that we go out with the courthouse and jail so that it's a larger number, you get...
If you go to RFP, you're not going to want to issue these bonds along with the courthouse because you're not going to spend them down in 24 months.
Thank you.
So if...
Then you get in trouble for the arbitrage trade and we build interest on it and not spend them.
Exactly.
Right. So, yes, you're, you're not going to want to move forward with issuing these bonds because you're not even going to be starting to pay out anything, and that would go against what we need to do.
So here's, here's my take. I'd like to hear from the sheriff and anyone else who'd like to weigh in on this upcoming decision, and then I think the three of us do sort of a heat check on where we're all at, because where we're at determines what we do or not do on number two. So sort of public comment time, if you have some thoughts, I'm sure entertain hearing them from anyone in the room or on the phone. And then I think we discuss where you're at, and then if we've got two, we go one way or the other, so.
I think your county attorney is after your opinion, you got to look at that. Opinion is really helpful. We do have, this radio system has been brought up before, and this is further it's had, so I'll leave it in the board's hands.
As emergency management, I want to state the concerns of the emergency responders as well, that whatever you decide or whatever you have to do, don't leave it on the shelf. Keep it moving forward, whatever step it takes. We need to move this forward. Luckily enough, we haven't lost a firefighter through radio communications, we haven't lost a police officer, whether it's a deputy or civil police through negligence of the radio communications. It is defunct, we know that, but we need to move forward with whatever decisions that you make and keep those moving forward. I think progress is better than sitting back and saying, "We'll wait for a rainy day when we get more funds," because we know that never happens, so. So please, please, please keep it moving forward.
Can I give an example? Last night, we had a fire. So Indianola had a fire on South Arce Street last night. They dumped us in Martinsville, Norwalk, for mutual aid. At that time, when their command ended up on scene and they were out on South Arce, dispatch could not hear the command. Kept replying back, "It's static, we cannot hear you, repeat, please." They set up a staging area. We were coming in our equipment truck from South Dominion, we were down at South River, and this is on a mobile, which has more wattage. They could not even pick me up, acknowledging I heard the staging area. I repeated twice, they could not hear me. So last night was a clear night, last night was a perfect night for transmissions of any sort moving through the air. And when you're out on South Arce and you got dispatch here in town and they can't even hear the command, there's no way you're going to hear a firefighter calling for a mayday inside of a house. And that's just a normal structural built house, no steel, no nothing. Also, nobody's going to speak for a man down of any sort. They're trapped, I mean, a lot of times, a fire call, we're on a, we're on a fire ground, so we're not tying up the main channel, which is, you know, the communication of fire channel one. But at that time, if a firefighter cannot get a hold of command, they should be able to go to the main fire channel and get dispatch and call out for a mayday. So I mean, you guys know how frustrated everyone gets when they can't get a cell phone coverage. Try being stuck in a house and you know you can't get out, and you're not going to have anybody come get you because nobody can hear you. I mean, that's going to be one of the scariest things you ever encounter. And a lot of you have never went through that, and a lot of us trained for that. But when you train and it's supposed to be in process, but that works, then when it doesn't work, it's not a good feeling. So I just, I would ask the board just to look at that and think of that, because this happened last night on a perfect night, clear, calm, no clouds, we can even have communication from South Arce to dispatch. There's an issue.
Officer, we had a search and fire two weeks ago for Dominion Township in town. We had sight to the tower. I had two crews in the house fighting the fire. We could not communicate with the crews inside. We had guys at the door that we could yell to each other just to communicate. We ended up switching over at Oseola Clark County Fire Channel to communicate because we couldn't communicate better on theirs than O'Callaghan or County. And when we had massive stuff, we had to switch to Oseola Clark County. So we can't trust our O'Callaghan system.
Are there any others? Are there any others?
Chris, do you want to talk, tell them about the communication that your frustrations with fire and law losing transmission?
It's terrible. Last night, they couldn't hardly even get to get officers, they had a situation down in Southern part of the county. Sometimes it's very garbled, unratable, it's, it's not just a robotic, it's that you can kind of discern between, but it's there's just a lot of coverage that doesn't work a lot of times, sometimes they don't get the page. And then, if they do get the page, a lot of times we're using cell phones to contact, but the radio system just doesn't go through. It's not only an officer safety issue, but depending on which situation you're working, if it's a law or a joint fire law, something like that, the the system we have right now is, is not working. It is, in my opinion, only a matter of time before someone gets hurt, and the liability in this county is going to be huge. And as a dispatcher, who has to be the person that's responsible to make sure that my officer goes home, or my firefighter or medic doesn't get hurt or injured, and goes home to their families at the end of the night, the amount of stress that's on this dispatcher to not be able to have a radio system that I'm able to communicate with them and make sure that they're safe is a very stressful, stressful thing. I don't think it is something that we can wait or put off. It's something that has to be fixed relatively soon. I, I don't know what the answer is, because I don't get to come to all these meetings, but it is definitely, it isn't about when it's going to happen, it's when it's going to happen, that someone here on fire, medic, law is going to get hurt because of the radio, a lot of, there is no radio communication. Carlisle Police Department, there's places in their city that have no service, you know, whatsoever, you're calling and calling and calling, and they're not hearing it. Or they're calling us, and we're not hearing it.
Or if you hear them as static.
It's all garbled, static, you're trying, there's both dispatchers in there right now to, to try and discern what some of the traffic is. I hear it, and I'm like, "What did they just say?", and if you're lucky, you might be able to get a little bit of what he or she might have said. And it's, it's just very, it's very stressful, it's, it's not only for them, but for us, for both, and I know they get frustrated, fire, you know, fire departments get frustrated, like, "We've been calling you, I'm sitting here, but there's nothing coming through." I, I'm not just ignoring you, it's, it's not coming through, and it is definitely a safety issue, not only for them, but for the public. Is that what you're looking for? I don't, I don't, you know, just, there are just different, you know, specific incidences, like in Lacona, sometimes, you know, they don't even get the page, you gotta, and you're trying to call, you know, people's cell phone numbers and say, "Hey, did you hear that? Can you, you know, can you go to that?" It's just, I, I don't know what the answer is, but we, we need to do something, something different. And the system that we're working off of now, I guess my understanding is we're reusing Weston Wayne's, is it their tower, or I don't know how I explain, but the patch system that we have to keep our old repeater channels to our new repeater channel, the patches that we use are, were really designed for a temporary, but we're using them all day, every day, and so then you get feedback. And it overlaps, and then you're constantly hearing your own cell phone, so you let off the button because you're, you're hearing yourself, and it's not something that's supposed to happen, so you think you, you know, you're making a mistake or something's not right, so you let off, and then they're like, "County, what did you say?", and it's, it's just a constant garble-ness, I guess, I don't know how else to explain it. I just invite you to come in and sit down, I guess, that's the best way to, it, it just is very, it's a stressful job anyway, but it's become more so trying to make sure that your people go home at the end of the night. And we just had one last night, we had a burglary in progress, and the deputy had somebody at gunpoint, and we had a fire going in Indianola, and a lot of stuff going on, and when your traffic's garbled, and you got somebody at gunpoint, it makes it very difficult to, we have to have a system where we can understand, they can hear, we can hear them, it, it just, it just is. I, I, I know it's probably going to be a lot of money, but I think if something happens to somebody, whether it's the public or one of the employees who work for this county, the money you're going to pay out is going to you know, I, I don't, it's dangerous. It's very dangerous, is all I can say.
Thank you.
So, at, at Norwalk, we're in a little bit different situation since we're on Westcom. But we do mutual aid with Indianola, we do mutual aid with Martin's Dale and other jurisdictions within the counties. It is a huge concern of mine as our officers, firefighters, are going into those other jurisdictions for mutual aid calls that they're not able to communicate with the other jurisdictions or within, you know, with, with our, with our, back to our base. It's, I, it's, it's a huge public safety concern. We've had sheriff deputies up in Norwalk where they are walking around with their hand held up in the air trying to find, trying to get signal and trying to talk. We're not in the same situation because we're, again, we're on Westcom. I still think the county needs to move forward with this as quickly as possible. I think my, my biggest issue, and I know, I voted no at the, at the meeting the other night, the reason I voted no is because I don't think, I don't think Norwalk or the other jurisdictions should pay for jurisdictional radios, that's why my no vote was there, I'm still of that opinion. But as far as the infrastructure goes, I think you need to move forward as quickly as possible.
I want to say the other thing, you know, about them being on Westcom, we've had a lot of chases. Now that it's getting to be nice for weather, we have a lot of those, one, one week we had five. And the problem with the patches is like Carlisle was going up into Pope County. Well, they don't use Des Moines Lea anymore, so we have to use to the, to the mix. Well, I tried to patch so that we could get Pleasant Hill, Pope County, all of them on so they could join this chase. And that's something that's no longer our county, I couldn't get the patch because Westcom has priority over me. So then, it took both of us, because then my dispatcher had to call Pope County, we have to relay, I'm calling my chase with my officer, my partner's relaying it to Pope County over the phone, Pope County was then relaying it over the mix channel. So by the time the officer was 125 miles an hour, their people already missed him because everything was delayed. Because we didn't have, couldn't have the patch, because it's already used by Westcom. And it was frustrating for us because I couldn't figure out how come it wasn't working. And then it was explained to me that we're using their equipment, so they have that priority. And that, that's the other problem, I don't know how we can, or what we do to get it to our system. We have our own tower, if that's how it works, I'm not really sure, but to go off Westwayne and they have the priority to pick what channels they need patched, because two can't be patched at the same time. So, no other choice, but it took both our people to do this one incident because you have to, I have to listen and call what he's doing, and then she's having to relay it over the phone, where if we could have just patched the channel, we wouldn't need all that. So, I, I don't know how to, how or what takes to fix that issue. But, you know, having to rely on someone else's system at this point can really cause a problem.
I think that all goes away once we're all on ISICS. Once, once we're all using the same backbone and the infrastructure, I think that all goes away, and I think, thank you for the Motorola guys for saying that.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that, that's just what I was thinking about having our own, where we're not relying on Westwayne, because I don't, I don't think it was a Motorola issue, I think it's just only, you know, you can only have so many patches at a, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I wasn't trying to say it.
No, no, I didn't take that.
Yeah, no, it, it's just that only so many people can have a patch at one point, you know, and if we're using their system, they get the priority, and then we were out. And it happened the same when we had a chase that went into Madison County. So it's, that, that's the problem with the pa, the patching of someone else's system.
Any other input? These are pretty compelling. You want to start out, Doug, how you feel about?
I guess I'm disappointed that we didn't put it out for bids two years ago or six months ago or whatever. Seems to me if we vote to go on, we're breaking the law. I can't do that.
I'm torn, I, it's not the number, I don't like the number, I don't think anyone other than maybe Motorola likes the number. And even then, they probably want a bigger number. But it's not the number so much. It's the time delay for going out to bid that doesn't sit well with me if we add two to four months of RFP in bid process to this. I think by going out to bid and just historically, based on my own experiences, the more parties that you have bidding on something, the better price is, is achieved. And so I, I can't promise that going out to bid is going to do, is going to move the needle a whole lot, it might, it might not. The Hooper Tower site and building another tower might negate some savings. It might be a wash with a time delay, that would be a bad thing. I balance those thoughts and concerns with our opinion from Doug on, I, I don't want to break the law, I don't exactly understand how other counties have reached a different conclusion, apparently with no real repercussions thus far. That doesn't mean that it's right, though, if the law's the law and we all should respect it, and I think it's problematic when government picks and chooses which laws they want to follow, and that doesn't set a very good example for other people. So, at this point, I'm, I'm leaning towards making sure that we do bid out a portion of it so that we're in compliance. But it, it really needs to happen fast, I mean, really fast. And I guess I'm displeased for whatever it's worth, and maybe some of that's on me at this point, because I've not been here for a few months, but if that was the, if that was the conclusion, then Doug's right, I mean, it's not, it's not the county attorney's fault that, that an opinion was requested from them on Wednesday. And they, and they generated it on Friday, that's not, that's not their fault. It's just information that I would have liked to know before we're, we're here, because it, it's going to stall it months, and that's, that's really hard to look at people that their lives might be changed permanently or forever, because we're going to have to stall this thing for a couple of months, and I don't like it. I don't, I don't exactly see how we don't listen to our own county attorney's opinion. So that's where I'm leaning, but I'm not, I might go against that too, I'm swayable.
Okay, Tim, as our engineering consultant on this project, if we were to go to bid, and we're going to break out the civils and the microwave radios into two separate parts, you stated earlier that it would be four to six months minimum? And if we were.
That's correct.
Okay, and if we were to combine this as one unit out to Motorola and Raycom, which are the only two systems we have in Iowa, and that would be at a minimum of four months, it seems because of time that that would be the better option, am I correct in assuming that?
You know, it's, it's certainly up to you, to you guys, but if you're going to, if you're going to bid at this rate, you certainly bid it all, or we can separate it, and I mean, from a timing standpoint, let's say, let's take the first case, let's separate it. If we do the civils, and then if you were going to bid the LMR and microwave portion, I would stagger it by a couple of months, only because the tower's infrastructure needs to be known. If you're going to bid the LMR portion, Motorola's design would be different than Harris' design, obviously, because we don't have the Hooper site in there, so another tower would have to replace that. So, that's why combining it kind of gives you a little more control of that, Raycom would bid another tower site and replace Hooper in their own bid, and control that where Motorola would utilize the Hooper site in theirs. So, you know, either, either way, at this point, from a time perspective, I would combine it. From a price perspective, I would break it up to two, so, but that doesn't mean you won't get a good price, but if you combine it, but it would certainly free up just power, power and shelter providers to bid without a prime like a Harris or Motorola in, in between, so.
Is there.
But combining it together is a quicker process.
Okay, is there a way to put in specs that we have, we want the Raycom and Motorola to bid that part out? I'm just asking, I, I have no idea if that's even allowable or not.
When you say that, are you meaning the civils?
Yes. For us not to handle it, but for them to do it with as local vendors as possible.
Yeah, I mean, they, I'm sure from Motorola's perspective and from a Raycom perspective, they're going to get the best price they can because they know in a, as a situation, they don't want the civil, civils costing them the job, so they'll, they have multiple sources, they will get multiple bids from contractors, they don't do it formally like accounting would, but they would get prices from several sources in order to get the best possible price in their bid documents, so that's kind of automatic in their process.
Okay, all right, thank you, Tim.
My concern would be as far as if we vary from the ISICS system, because there's a lot of decisions that went into why we chose the ISICS system and not, I mean, not Motorola, Raycom. You already have the Motorola consoles, so if you ended up going with a different system that's buying new consoles, all the, provide all the agencies out there right now that do have radios are using the Motorola radios. So my concern would be is if you're going out and varying from the ISICS system and going to the disparate system, there's a lot of pros and cons that go with that. And I would strongly suggest that we stay with the ISICS system. Because that's statewide coverage, it's a statewide system, and, and that's kind of the path that the 911 Board and the Emergency Management Commission has went down. And I understand bidding out the structures, and you'd still be in, and Doug Eichel's can correct me if I'm wrong, but bidding out the towers still meet the letter of the law. But still getting us on the ISICS system and working through contract negotiations to get that side of the contract done with Motorola.
Okay, so instead of bidding out the civils and the LMR and the microwave, you're saying go and bid out the civils, but stay with Motorola and continue negotiating with them?
That would be my opinion.
And not go to Raycom?
Yeah, that would be my opinion.
Okay.
A little different matter, Doug, are you there?
Yeah.
Yes, Doug, on the tower. On the tower, the Hooper tower, I know we've discussed, we've got some kind of an agreement with them. Do we have an opinion if we don't, we can't get on those, on that tower?
Well, I think we, we're trying to look through the minutes and listen to the minutes from the meeting that whoever from the state was there talked about it and figure out what the actual understanding was between the county and the state on that. I think it's open for interpretation right at the moment. That's something that we can continue to look at.
Because you kind of flagged out a little bit, you said it's still open to interpretation?
I think it's still open for interpretation, and I think that's something that we need to, we need to look into a little further. I don't know that it's a done deal that we can't negotiate with the state on it. I would be disappointed if the state would take a position that because Warren County goes with another vendor other than Motorola that we have to put out the money to build a whole new tower. I think that would be bad government at its best, you know, to make us spend that kind of money. Their toy, you get to do what they want with it. But I think there's a compelling argument to go to them and say, why are you doing this to us? And I'm willing to engage them in doing that, you know, with board's approval, board's assistance in that. My opinion is not that you have to go with one vendor over another. I'm not saying that you can't go with Motorola, you have to go with Raycom or whomever comes in and bids. All, all our opinion deals with really is the towers or the Civs, as you call it. You can pick whatever radio system you want.
So I guess that leaves the county for going out to bids with the towers if we were to take that option. Is that correct, Tim?
That's, that's correct. We would continue, we would negotiate a, if the decision is not to bid the LMR and microwave portion, then we would continue, we would negotiate with Motorola, complete negotiation with Motorola to sever the Civil portion of it and come back to you with a price on that. And then we would then bid out the towers, the building generators as, at least in my opinion, as one, as one bid for the Civil portion of it.
Okay.
All right. I've got some thoughts to weigh in, and I'm happy to share them. It looks to me like we're going down complying with our county attorney's legal opinion to bid. So since that's apparently the path that the board wants to go down, I'm okay with, aside from the timing issue and aside from getting some clarification on radios for Norwalk and others that already bought them, but that's a later topic. I think if we're going down the bid path, it doesn't, I absolutely want to open up the bid path for all, and that includes Raycom. You want to deal with one player, you're going to get one player's price, and it'll eventually come to a take it or leave it number, and what are we going to do? Look at everyone and say, nope. So if we want to get the price right, then we open it up to everyone. That includes Raycom, and yeah, there's going to be some additional expense with maybe consoles or some other things, but I think we, I at least want to know that, give a shot to bid. If they're still substantially less expensive than Motorola, then we have a decision to make. And we also don't know definitively, although we've been told that we can't use the tower. I haven't heard that from the governor. I mean, I, we haven't explored that fully enough for me to say definitively that every I has been dotted and T has been crossed on, hey, someone told us from ISICS we can't use it. I haven't heard that yet. So at least from where I want to hear it from. But I'm not saying they're wrong, but I'm saying let's explore it all. If we're going to explore it all, let's do it as fast as we can. Let's get the RFP out and start it on this week. I don't want to just bid on part of it. I want to bid on it all. That's what we're going to do. Let's, if we want to save money for the county taxpayers, then let's at least explore all. Doesn't mean that we might not have preferences, doesn't mean that we might not end up at the same spot with the same radio and the same Motorola. We might, we might, but we might not. So I would vote for total bid.
And one concern I would have with that is the ISICS is a statewide platform that if our officers go to Madison County, they go to Clark County, they go to Lucas County, we still have coverage. If you go with the Raycom, they have towers in Pope County, they've got great coverage in eastern Iowa, Long Island, Johnson, Lynn, and all that. But ISICS and the Motorola platform is the only one that's true statewide. So if we leave our footprint, we've lost our coverage. We've lost any additional coverage that we gained by joining the ISICS system. And that's part of the decision to why the responders have chose the path that we did.
I get it. I just want to have all information on the table, and then we can look at all considerations. And those are very valid and very compelling reasons to go with that, and I don't disagree with them. But I want to look at all of them. I think that we should. I don't think we're doing enough due diligence if we don't.
Any other comments from the public?
Just one, one more question for me. I would, I would ask if Doug or the county attorney, if we're going to go out and bid the Civs or all of it, whichever we end up doing, that we find out definitively as soon as possible whether the Hooper tower is replaced from those systems or not, so I can know what we're working with.
We should have a, we should have a definitive response in writing by Friday, and maybe sooner.
Thank you.
Are you going to speak?
Yeah, I guess, I know it probably sounds self-serving to say it, but, you know, Tim, could you define what the timeline is just on the Civil bid portion if they bid just that, please?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch all that question. What about the town?
Hey, Tim, Dan Paul with Motorola. Hey, what would the timeline be if they just bid out the Civil portion? Your estimation?
Uh, probably over four months. And I would stick it, take a minimum. I don't know what the county's requirement is. They have a requirement for a minimum time out to the vendor community, but I'm assuming in that timeline, a couple of weeks to do, get the, out to vendors, and I don't have the schedule in front of me that I presented in the, in the previous meetings, but roughly a month on the street, a month in evaluations, and a month to get a contract approved. So four months total, at least, I think would be a minimal timeline.
Okay, thanks. And the only reason I'm bringing it up is if there's any possibility, if you guys decided to move forward negotiating with us on the radio side and stick with us, you know, what work could we get started ahead of time while you guys are doing that to make sure that schedule is expedited as much as possible? That's the only thing I wanted to bring up for you guys, is that if you guys do decide to move forward, this six and Motorola, we can get a head start on our work so that once the Civil catches up, we can make sure this project gets done as fast as possible. Thanks.
Any other comments from the public? I would like to take a motion on the 911 communication proposal so that we can continue to move forward. And I think we've had three options given to us. One is to bid it out as a complete package for Raycom and Motorola. We can break out the Civs and bid the electronic portion of it, which is LMR and microwave, as well as the Civs. Or we can just bid out the Civs, which would meet the requirements of the opinion given to us by our county attorney and continue negotiating with Motorola. So I would entertain a motion for one of those three so we can continue to move forward with this project.
Before that happens, Doug, do you think that it would be? Because, I mean, Motorola makes a good point, because they're going to be able to start, and it will save time in the event that we only go with them for that portion. I still like that aspect because we're right back at the same lack of bargaining power at the table where they're going to pick a number, and what are we going to say? Yay or no?
Well, that's why we have only come, to continue to check their pricing.
Sure. But before we, before I feel comfortable picking which of those options, I still really want to definitively know on, on the Hooper site, whether or not we can, I guess, I want to know if we're breaking out the other portion to bid, do we have to start with a new tower? Is that worth the additional time in slow rolling Motorola if we have to do a new tower? I would lean towards no. Let's go with Motorola and bid the Civs and whatever else we can theoretically save money on, and then negotiate just with Motorola. Something I do not like doing, just not because of them, but just because I don't like to negotiate to one person. If you're buying a car, you want to shop at 10 different car lots, you're going to buy a cheaper car. But I don't really know that answer until we know on the Hooper tower definitively. So I think it's a little premature, and so what I'd like to do is, let's find out that answer unequivocally this week by, let's say, Thursday or Wednesday. I don't care. We can figure it out real fast, I think. And then come back and pick which option we want to go with, considering that either one of those options at a minimum bids on the Civs, because I think we're required to do so. And then if we, if we can use the Hooper site tower with either provider, sorry Motorola, I think we, we bring in all parties. Whoever can bid on that stuff, let them bid on it. And if, if we can't, then I think we just bid on the Civs and start from scratch with contract negotiations with Motorola on that aspect, and then we'll stick with the ISICS, which is what's keeping most of these people happy. That's what I like to do. So I think it's just a little early, but that's my take.
I think I'd be shocked because we could hear from the state, I'm sure they're excited.
Me too, too.
Well, if it's next week, then it's next week. But I think if we start making phone calls at 10:15, we're going to respond to a statement. My guess is you can do.
Okay. So if that is tabled until, we want to meet on Monday and have some definitive answers, hopefully.
Why don't we try Thursday or Friday or whatever?
Let's just set, let's set the meeting for Friday, and then if we don't know an answer by Friday, which I'm going to be optimistic. Then we can do it next week, but without knowing that answer, I mean, I think the sheriff thinks that it's an absolute no, they wouldn't allow it.
I can see some other counties that do not allow Raycom on the SC system and the tower destructors. March County has a problem with Raycom, they can't reveal on the SC's tower, and I know they got told no.
My, my only, my only thought is I'm not confident that those other counties change their zoning ordinance and bend over backwards to allow the tower site in their county. And there might be some meeting minutes reflecting the same. So I'm not disagreeing with what's coming. I'm just saying I haven't heard it from way up the chief of command. I'm just saying it isn't going to happen. If it's not, then I think we know where our fallback position is, which is bid out the Civs and start from scratch with Motorola on the remaining portions of the deal, which is what I think makes most of the room happy if we ultimately end up on the ISICS system. I mean, I get it, there's my cards on the table. I think that everyone probably concedes that, but on the other hand, if we can use the tower and if it's, you know, by bidding it out $2.1, $2.3 million cheaper than the 9.4 we're looking at, well, you got to make some decisions then, so.
Wonderful. All right, so let's set up a meeting for Friday, Friday morning. Item number two cannot be decided on?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think, it sounds sweet one way or the other, you're going to go to RFP on the Civs, so you're not going to issue one. There's no reason to set a public here.
All right, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Next, Tim.
Aye.
You could.